Okay, the...
Did you call the meeting order?
Yeah, I called the meeting to order. It is... It's only that clock up there, it's six minutes past seven. Okay. First item on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes. And I don't know what you all have now. Haven't had a chance to read them, I know.
No.
So, I sort of fresh up them, so... Minutes of our September 20th meeting. Those present with Don Thurston, Chairman, Clerk Tom Hyggin, Dana Dummer, and Michael Doherty. Meeting was called for order at 7:10. Mislenious business as pool of minutes, minutes of July 19, 2012. Michael Doherty motions to accept the minutes of July 19, 2012 meeting. Dummer seconds, all members voted in favor. Out of the business, hiring process for new administrative assistant. In order to select the hiring process for a new administrative assistant, designating the chairman as the sole hiring authority based on the town administrative committee. Most make no sense. This would negate the need for public hearings pertaining to interviews and related assessments. Not done on most, and Michael Doherty seconded such. Voted in, all in favor, motion carries. Continuing hearings at 7:20 PM. Thompson's, Gis, Johnson's, Trust, Marion Way, void be comprehensive permit, Dana's Road. Thurston, Chairman Thurston reads letter from applicant John Giffles requesting a continuance for the October 18 meeting. Based on the absence of needed data, the board reluctantly accept the letter and decides to continue hearing once again. Not done on motions, and Tom Hyggin seconds motion to continue. Voted all in favor, motion carries. Discussion, informal review, 7:35, 112 Weatherfield Street, Dana's Road. Void review applicant's desire for special permit construction and attached garage to the premises of said address under section 4.25. Excuse me, section 5.4.1. Which would negate the need for public hearing. Post-analysis of the applicant's project shows that because of proposed renovation will still be within the setback but already non-performing this lot, the application does not meet all the conditions under 541. It must be reviewed and approved in full hearing. The board sets a hearing date for October 20th meeting and agrees to provide letter to building inspector indicating preliminary priority per here's request, see attached letter, page 10. 7:55 PM, 81 Hillside, Kenneth Kumpf. On behalf of owner, build applicant, Ken Kumpf submits plan for screened enclosed porch and patio to be added to premises adjacent to rear of property under section 5.4.1. While lot is non-performing, if no change to non-performing status is impacted, this section allows board to approve a change to non-performing structure without the need of a public hearing. The board reviewed the application, it submitted and found no conflict with any development of 5.4.1. The board then directed clerk to draft a letter for approvals to the building inspector. Motion made by Doherty, and seconded by Dummer. All members voted in favor. See attached letter, you'll get the beat. Adjournment, Doherty. Doherty motions to adjourn, Dummer seconds, all members voted in favor. Meeting's adjourned to 10 PM. Documents provided, meeting available at ZDA office. Okay, all those in favor of the minutes for September 20th meeting? Aye.
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to accept them?
Make a motion or we accept them, minutes read.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, motion to be seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to note for the rest of the board that as part of those minutes, the board has received a copy of the letter that was sent to the building inspector for each of those properties. One was an indication on Hillside that he could proceed, as far as we were concerned, under 5.4.1. And the second was an advisory letter regarding our case tonight, Janet Blanchett's case, which was simply saying, we did not see any circumstances which would prevent the board from approving it, but we were unable to approve it under 541 because it's still... The addition is going to encroach. So you have copies of both of these letters, with Don's name. They look similarly, one is titled 81 Hill Summit Ave., both two-page letters, and the other, 112 Weatherfield. Both were sent and received by Ken. Can you read this?
Yep.
You don't have to read that.
Okay.
Do it, go ahead.
No, I don't think I can.
Okay. Okay, a public hearing tonight, 7:15. For Janet Blanchett, 112 Weatherfield Street. Under section 5.4.2. Am I correct?
Correct. So you got to open the hearing at 7:14?
That would be the application best they can. Another application from Janet M. Blanchett, 112 Weatherfield Street. Top line number 978-948-3861. The address of the owner is Janet M. Blanchett, 112 Weatherfield Street, Raleigh, Mass. She's asking for a special permit under section 5.4.2. The Raleigh prospective bylaw. Premises is 112 Weatherfield Street, Sess is map 17, block 12. District is in the over... There's no overweight district that's there. Deed is registered, S is registry of deeds, book number 28779, page 325. And it's listed as possible, 017-012. There's been no variance or special permit on this lot. Description of proposed work or use is to have a garage with a handicap platform left inside. Reason for the request is to get my handicapped son Danny from the upstairs in our home out. He does not walk on his own and cannot do stairs. Janet M. Blanchett. Okay. We don't have to vote on the letters list anymore, do we?
I don't know.
Okay, Janet, you want to come up here and just show us what you're doing?
What do you want me to do?
I want you to explain to the board just what it is and why. Okay?
My house is about 43 feet back. The garage is going to be 47 feet back so that I can go up from the upstairs of my home with a platform lift into the garage, into the front, to meet his handicapped bus that comes muddy through Friday through the driveway. Right now I have 150-foot walkway, right here is a walkway of 150 feet. Every single day in the winter, I've got to... Myself, I'm a single mom. I've got to shovel it, ice, snow, even if there's no snow, if there's ice. You know, it's a lot of work.
Okay, and if you were to build this garage up in line with your house, you wouldn't be able to get the... You wouldn't be able to get the lift inside, right?
Well, it is a little behind the house. It's set back from the house.
Yes. Okay. Let him... Okay, let me reframe my... If you would come back so conform, you wouldn't have enough room to get that thing?
Exactly, yeah.
To be able to get your car?
Right, to do everything, yeah. And then it wouldn't serve the purpose because now I'd have all this to shovel.
Right, okay. All right, then you are 46 feet away from here and 49 from there.
What are you looking at? I'm looking at... Oh, you're looking at the outside, yeah.
Outside, yes. So, this is a...
At 47 feet.
This is a right of way to what?
To the back. What's... Ken Wood said it was just, it's called an easement.
Okay, right away, okay, you just can't block it.
Right.
And you're not blocking, so that's right. Okay. All right.
My recollection is when we looked at this five month, Mr. Chairman, the principal reason that we had to go to a hearing was that this front, even with the slide setback, she's still in... She's still within 50 feet of the front of the street.
No, right.
And there was some discussion about the possibility of shifting it as a structure back a little bit, but that wouldn't work given the design that's already been worked out, is that right?
Right.
Okay, that's right. So consequently, there were no other impacts otherwise in terms of the setback that we saw, and it looks like a fairly straightforward design. So, I don't have any issues with this.
No, I don't either. Okay, do I hear a motion to accept Janet's application is consented?
Yes, I will move that.
You'll second that? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 You too.
You too. Kind of paying for it. Okay, all right. You will get...
We'll draft an approval for a special permit and get that recorded. Well, we need to get this signed. What are you going to be?
All right, okay.
We just need to get it signed. It'll probably be recorded, depending upon our signing. If it's too thin, one's like you around by...
They will, they will open for Monday.
Right, right. We'll send, you'll send...
Ken Wood said if you approved it tonight and you send him a letter, he'll give us the builder permit Monday.
Okay, I have no problem sending him a letter saying we approved it. We can just have it signed by the chairman.
Okay, but then how can, how can he get it by Monday?
Oh, I could, I could give it to him tonight if I wanted to.
Okay.
So he can definitely have it by Monday.
All right, because my contract is going Monday morning to get it.
Okay.
We've got people in place already for Monday morning to start.
You're right on the ball.
You're right.
It's getting to be winter.
Yeah, no, you're right. You're right. I think if every person who's building and contractors like you're maybe pleased. Excellent, no, we'll get a letter to him then. If he just needs a letter indicating our approval, we'll send a letter signed by the chairman indicating that we reviewed it, approved it, and voted in favor.
Could I, could I get a letter tonight?
I can't give you a letter tonight. Do you have an email address?
Yeah.
I can send you the letter.
Okay, I'll give you my email.
Go ahead. Okay.
I like the line dance.
I guess.
Now the whole town's going to send you something.
Going cruises.
It's okay.
Okay, I'll send you that so that you have a... We'll also send a copy to him so he'll have it tomorrow.
Okay, great.
And then your bill will be all set for him on Monday. And then this, this will still get recorded next week once it's signed, and then you can get a copy and we can get a copy. You can take a copy to Ken at that point, so he has a signed decision for his records as well.
Don't forget, you still got to go to registry of deeds and file it.
When? What do I...
Anytime.
After 20, after the 20-day appeal period.
Well, after the board files it. After the board files it.
Or at the town clerk.
Will you tell me or you send me something?
Yeah, we'll let you know when we file it.
At the same, same time that we notify you that it's been approved, we will also file it with the town clerk.
Okay.
The decision at the town clerk. And 20 days after that, the date of the decision. Days of filing. You have 20 days, any letters of anybody that wants to appeal it, 10. After the 20-day, that's an appeal period. After the 20-day appeal period, you go down to the town clerk, you get a certified copy of the decision, and you take it down to the registry
Okay.
of deeds, and then you submit proof that you filed it to 10-1.
And that will be written on your decision.
Oh, it will be, okay.
Instructions will be written on the back.
I have your number anyways to call him if I have any questions.
But consider it done.
Okay, great, I'm all done?
That's it?
Thank you.
Hopefully it fills fast.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks. Oh, good, I'm glad. Yay!
What should I have done, two weeks ago?
Bye!
Good help, I've done at the foundation. For you then.
Okay. We've got five minutes before Mr. Deculus is supposed to be here, but we've got a letter around here somewhere. Did you actually count this?
No. I think he is.
You all have...
He has come by the letter.
Told the letter.
I thought we got away five minutes or something. You got the letter?
Yeah.
Okay. Date is October 16th. How you spell first-class mail?
I know. It's consistent.
October 16th by first-class mail, an email. Raleigh's only board of appeal, Field Box 275, 29 Central Street, Raleigh, Mass. 0969. Dear's onboard of appeal members, At a previous meeting in the Raleigh's only board of appeals, you requested that we submit our plans for review to the Raleigh Conservation Commission. We have been redesigning the stormwater system from a detention pond design to a subsurface design using plastic chambers manufactured by Caltech Incorporated, located in Field, Connecticut. This design is superior to detention ponds that are breeding ground for mosquitoes and are possible danger for children. The plastic chambers are very strong and durable and have been used under paved parking lots for stormwater storage. We have been working with Caltech local sales engineer Bob Goodrich from nearby Essex to develop a design that does not increase the existing stormwater runoff in the pond that begins at Marion Way. But unfortunately, he developed a serious illness and had to retire from the company. We are now working with his replacement in a close to a final design which we will submit to the Raleigh Conservation Commission as you requested with a copy to you. Kindly continued public hearing for the Marion Way project to your November 15, 2012 meeting. Signed very truly yours, John J. Deculus.
So no John. So no John.
So no John. So... What is the desire of the board? Do we accept this letter?
You have to, don't you?
I think we have to.
Yeah, I think we have to do.
Regrettably, leave it alone.
Is this kind of proposed design that they're doing, this subsurface thing, actually something that can be done, that area?
Well, this is...
That's what we're going to try to find out?
We don't know. That'll be another question later on.
That's another question, right?
When he brings it up.
Right. Right, I mean...
It addresses an issue though, that was raised by, by the Conservation Commission.
He's going to have to run it by the Conservation Commission. And if the Conservation Commission doesn't approve it, then we're going to have to work for another design. You know, I mean, it's just going to be round, and round, and round you go.
So maybe by the year 2020, they might be able to start something?
Depends on the market.
That's aggressive.
They'll find something, they'll find something else.
It's kind of close.
How long have we been working on this?
Well, two years.
Before I remember. We were trying to recall.
We were trying to, we were trying to recall, was it April of 2009?
No, it was 2010.
Much better, it was before.
It wasn't like, I thought it was May of 210.
Ask Katrina, she should know.
I came in the end, I came in the fall, so it was before I... It was in the spring, summer.
Yeah, because I remember it was... Remember he had that letter?
I was still an associate member at that time.
Yeah.
When he came in. And it was for quite a while.
Katrina's emailed him, she might know.
She knows.
It's got to be in the records.
We didn't answer, dear.
There's got to be.
Yeah, well, it's in the record.
It's in the records, the application.
Yep.
So we got to look at it.
I just don't have the whole file.
So is.
I think you would need several people to carry the file.
Yeah. So he has.
All right, do I hear a motion to accept this?
Make a motion or we accept this letter from Mr. Deculus. Looking for another continuance to November the 15th. Keeps going, I'll be on vacation again.
Okay, so I hear the second motion now.
She says, she says May 2010. She says, she says May twenty-ten.
May twenty-ten.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is terrific.
She's on the ball.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Just seems like it.
Okay.
Thank you.
She's always that, right?
That's all, that's all we've got on the docket. We do, we do have a visitor, Jess, who has expressed an interest. I wonder, Jess, if you would just, you know, tell us a little bit about yourself and what your interest is and why you're here. I received an email from her.
Come right up here.
Can I sit right up like that? Can I sit?
Way up here.
The camera's following you all the way.
My name's Jessica Russell. I go to Northern Essex Community College. I'm enrolled in an urban planning class. Unfortunately, it's nothing I really want to do. It's just an honors course that I have to take in order to get into the honors program. It's only been a few weeks since I've had it, but I do enjoy it. It is very interesting, but I'm a human service major, so I just want to help people that way. But this is very interesting, and I really appreciate you guys letting me come here and listen. It was very helpful. I'll get my report done. I'll send you an email and let you know how it goes.
That'll be fine.
Thank you.
That'll be fine. I wish we had a more active docket, but as I mentioned, we, this one case that we thought might continue has, and a prior case we reviewed, so it didn't involve a lot more work this evening than, than was otherwise the case.
Katrina said aye or?
Oh, see? Katrina's our former assistant.
Oh. Oh, sorry about that.
She took a more full-time job.
Oh, congratulations.
Yeah. In planning, she's the town planner.
She's the town planner.
Oh, awesome.
She's the town planner. Yeah, she would be a good woman to, in turn with, if you, if they do an internship or they give that kind of option.
Oh, awesome.
She would be fabulous.
Oh, great.
She would be.
I might have to email her.
Do, do you live nearby? I mean...
Yeah, I live in Georgetown.
Oh, good. Every third Thursday, feel free to come by.
Thank you. I might, I might have to come here for another project, so I'm sure.
That's fine.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions you have for us?
My only question I had is, when you guys talk about the minutes? What, what does that mean, approved of minutes?
Okay. But we, we have to record a written document as to what goes on.
Okay.
And those are called minutes.
Okay.
And we read the minutes for the previous meeting.
Okay. And that was on September twenty.
And that's what we voted on.
Okay.
The next, next meeting, we will vote on the minutes for tonight.
Okay. Wonderful. I think that was, um, the only thing I didn't really understand, but everything else, and like with the five point four point two, now is that just a certain?
That is, uh...
This is, this is the rules, zoning bylaws, I, bylaws in here, so the, this is like eight point eight, here's eight point seven one, and the one that was referenced is five four one.
Five one.
Five four one.
So we just look through here, and here's the rule that deals with the subject that we're dealing with.
Oh, okay.
For this, on that particular one, one issue.
It says zoning bylaws.
Okay. Thank you.
Katrina sort of hired you again.
Yeah. And they, they added a protective zoning bylaw.
Okay. Thank you.
All towns have some level of zoning bylaws, and the clauses are familiar to each case, so that just happened to be the one that was here tonight.
All right. Thank you so much.
You're going to see some of the interest. Yes, we've basically done.
Formal matter in front of whatever has been addressed tonight.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, but did Mike, did you already?
Mike, oh, Mike, Mike has, uh...
We have to have, that has to be part of the record. And we have the record. Okay.
We have to vote on this, I guess. I guess.
If, if we don't vote on it, we're just going anywhere.
We'll retain the salary.
Yeah, right.
Katrina might have something to say about this.
Eight Harrison Circle, Raleigh, Mass., October eighteenth, two thousand twelve. By hand delivery, didn't use the posters. You see the posters, yeah. So, W. Harrison Chairman's zoning Board of Appeals, thirty-nine Central Street, P.O. Box one nine, Raleigh, Mass. oh one nine six nine. Resignation of Michael Doherty. Dear Doherty, it is with great regret that I must notify you of my resignation from the zoning Board of Appeals effective October twenty-ninth, two thousand twelve. As you know, my wife and I have entered into an agreement to sell our house in Raleigh to permanently move to Western Massachusetts, and the closing is now set for October twenty-ninth, two thousand twelve. As of that date, I will be ineligible to serve as a member of the Raleigh's zoning Board of Appeals pursuant to zoning bylaws seven point one point one. I have greatly valued the two years I have spent on this board, the education I have received about zoning and the municipal board process, the time and effort each member of the board, and of course Katrina, has helped to assist me in this learning process and the enjoyable monthly interactions with a great group of people. I wish you all the best in the future, though I know that I will certainly keep in touch. Very truly yours, Michael B. Doherty. Will.
You will be missed.
You will.
I appreciate it. So do I hear a motion to accept Michael's resignation?
I make a motion, we accept. Miss regrets, a lot of who may leave.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion's been made to accept this letter of resignation of Michael with regrets. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Michael, we wish you the best.
Thank you.
We really do, we, we will be missed. You're a very valuable member to this board.
I appreciate it. Thank you for, you guys have given me as well, so.
The thing is, Katrina, she's speechless. She's, my friend, she must be thinking.
She shut it off already. She's never speechless, so.
She is never speechless.
Okay. All right. With that, I'll have to notify the town, I have to send this over to the town clerk.
Do we have anybody looking to get on the board?
That's the question.
Why don't we say that right now and get it out?
Yeah, go ahead. That's right.
Okay. Well, we're on it. This board meets on Thursday, Thursday of every month, and we are a five-member more board.
She emailed you, Mike.
With three alternate members. Right now, we have five full members and one alternate, and it is presumed that the alternate we have, Phil Crissy, will move up into Michael's position, which will give us five, a five-member board, but we have no alternates, which means that we really need some help. So any of you women or men out there that would like to join the zoning Board of Appeals, be in touch with the Board of Selectmen and let them know that you might be interested and that you might be appointed. Thank you.
Then we can adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Okay. Motion's been made, adjourn. Do I hear it seconded?